Okay, drawing and sat down.
There we go.
All right, please rise for the public reading.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now I'd like to call the school board meeting for Independent School District 544 to order. And we will begin by establishing a quorum in the absence of our clerk. Matt Lemke, would you serve that role tonight?
Sure. Kirby Anderson?
Here.
Natalie Knudsen?
Here.
Melanie Cole?
Present.
Matt Lemke here. Missy Hermes? Steve Bigasaw?
Here.
We do have a quorum.
All right, thank you very much. We have called for a resolution on acknowledgements. The acknowledgement is this: Thanks to Pamela Betcher for the donation to the Otter Angels Wi-Fi and Chromebook repair account, which is an account that's created anonymously to assist families unable to pay for student Wi-Fi and Chromebook repairs. And so would someone offer that resolution before its adoption?
Offer the resolution before its adoption.
Thank you, Steve. And a second?
I'll take it back.
Anybody, any discussion on that?
I didn't know this existed. This is great. When did this start?
Last spring.
Last spring it did?
Mm-hmm.
Is it, is Blake, you know, that's, how much is it, is it well-funded or is it?
At this point, this is, this is one of the first donations to it.
Was it?
Yep.
Okay. Maybe that'd be something for the public to, you know, I guess, that the Otter Angel lunch account and a Wi-Fi repair, I suppose, takes with that insurance as well, too, I suppose.
Yep.
All right. Mr. Lemke, if you do vo-call?
Oh, yep. Steve Bigasaw?
Yes.
Missy Hermes? Matt Lemke, yes? Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Natalie Knudsen?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
All right, thank you.
I'm sure. Can we go back and approve the agenda?
Oh, thanks, I was really getting started.
I didn't know we were moving.
I'm going to look for a motion to approve the agenda. It is as, as was emailed to us. Is there such a motion?
I'll make the motion.
All right, and a second?
One second.
Okay, any discussion on the agenda? All in favor of approving that, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, say nay? All right, that is approved. And then we'll move on to our reports and correspondence, and we'll start with Scott Kolbeck, our elementary principal at Adams and McKinley. Good evening.
Good evening. Well, here we are at the start of third quarter of school, and we're very excited and thankful to be able to say that at our elementary schools, K through six anyway, we've been able to be in-person all year long. Now, like I said to our staff at a staff meeting the other day, had you told me last year at the end of the school year that we would have still been dealing with this in the fall, I would have said, no, everything will be back to normal in the fall. But then if you would have asked me in the fall, do you think you'll be able to be in-person through the entire first semester, I would have said, no way. So we're very pleased to be where we're at and to have an in-person school for our elementary students as we begin our third quarter. So when you start a quarter, it's because another quarter ended. Our second quarter ended last week, which means we will be sending home second-quarter progress reports with our students on Friday of this week. In the elementary schools, we send them home with students. We do not mail them, but we send them home in their Friday take-home folder. This week, we are celebrating in our schools what's called Paraprofessional Week. And so we have all kinds of fun things planned for our paraprofessionals at McKinley and Adams. We have three different types of special, of paraeducators. We have our, we have our Special Ed Para group, that's the largest group. We have Title I paras, that's the smallest group. And somewhere in the middle, we have people who are called paraeducators, if they don't fall into either one of those two groups I just mentioned. So just a special thank you to all of our support staff, our paraprofessional staff. Obviously, it goes without saying, we couldn't run our schools without them, but the care and concern and patience they have with our students is terrific. Since we have come back from Christmas break, we have quarantined one classroom between the two buildings of McKinley and Adams. That was a first-grade classroom at Adams. Interestingly enough, it was the third time that that first-grade classroom needed to quarantine. Luckily, the second time happened over Christmas break. So only two times then have they had to be out of the school receiving instruction virtually. This is really interesting. When you look at our distance learning sections in kindergarten, first and second grade, our kindergarten distance learning section has remained quite stable this year. We are currently at fourteen students. Our highest point was fifteen. When you look at first grade, we are currently at fifteen students. At its peak, we had twenty-one kids in that distance learning section. In second grade, we've seen the most change or fluctuation. We're currently at seventeen kids. At its peak, we had twenty-five. So what happened here at the start of third quarter, we probably had nine or ten or eleven kids start back face-to-face. Now, some of these families contacted us maybe with a week left in second quarter, maybe two weeks left, maybe three weeks left. And we just talked with those families and just said, hey, how about we wait until the start of the quarter and get your student back with us face-to-face at the start of the third quarter? So that's what we have seen happen. Recently, all of our Title I staff, so that's our Title I teachers and our support staff, they did something with all of the students in kindergarten, first and second grade called a universal screening. So we take a look at our kids and we assess where they're at in their learning in the fall, winter, and spring. So we do this universal screening, and it's called DIBELS, D-I-V-E-L-S. And so here's what happens with that. Our support staff or our licensed staff meet with a student individually, and in kindergarten, we do a kind of a quick modified screening. We find out how many letters can a student identify in a minute, and then how many letter sounds can they produce in a minute. That's what happens in kindergarten. That information then is collected, it's shared with the classroom teachers, and our title staff use that information to determine, are we serving the correct kids in our Title I program? And are there some kids maybe that can exit, which would then make some room for some additional kids? In grade one, it gets a little bit more in-depth. There are four probes, so to speak, that are done with each student. The first one is called Letter Naming Fluency. So that's when a student is given a list of a random mix of uppercase and lowercase letters and see how many they can name. I don't believe that's timed. They just, they just show that to them. Then they do a Nonsense Word Fluency. That's a list of made-up words that demonstrate mastery of the phonics skills that we work on. So an example of a nonsense word might be B-A-P, BAP. It's, it's a word that's, it's nonsense. It's not a real word, but if the student can pronounce that word, we know that their, their phonics work is coming along nicely. Then we do something called a Word Reading Fluency. That's a list of real words that get progressively more difficult. So that's the third probe. And then the fourth and final probe is what's called an Oral Reading Fluency. That's when students read a passage, they read one passage that's timed for one minute, and then that can determine a student's, what we call words per minute. This student can read X number of words per minute. So we do that with every single first grader. And then we do those same probes with every single second grader, except the one we don't do with second grade is the letter, letter naming or letter identification. So we get all of that good information, and in visiting with Mike Evol today, he's our Title I lead teacher, Mike kind of oversees this. We took a couple first graders and were able to exit them from Title I services and a couple second graders as well. And then those openings or vacancies will be filled, but first, we want to take a look at the kids who have been learning virtually, who are coming back to us, that those nine or ten or eleven kids I talked about that are coming back to us. We want to take a close look at those kids because we think, and we know that some of them will need some, some title services as well. So just some really good work on the part of Mike Evol, Jeanette Fletchall as our licensed title teachers, and then numerous support staff who are either Title I paras or they're paraeducators who serve kids and act part of their day as if they were a Title I para. Okay, so in February here coming up is I Love To Read Month, and what we're going to do this year is something that we've done the last couple years. It's a school-wide, very fun, exciting thing that we do called One School, One Book. One School, One Book. Last year, the book was about a character named Hugo, who was a Sasquatch, and that was a huge hit. Unfortunately, with the pandemic, we weren't able to finish the book and do a lot of the activities that we had planned. This year, the book that's been chosen is a book titled The World According to Humphrey. Humphrey is a hamster, and Humphrey tells the story from his perspective, and he gets to go home every weekend with a different student in the class. And so he gets to see how various kids in that classroom live and sees their home environment. And it's a, it's a very, very cute story. I think it'll go over very well. We are set to order at least three hundred sixty-two of those books for every first and second grader that's attending school right now, and we are including our sections of distance learning. So right now, if you were to take every first and second grader in our district, including the kids that are in the distance learning sections, we have three hundred sixty-two of them. Today, we started winter map testing at McKinley. Tomorrow, we started Adams. That's something we as well do three times a year, fall, winter, spring. A special thank you to Andrea Knick at Adams School and Meg Garrahan at McKinley School who oversee that. They make the schedule, they do the proctoring. It's a lot of work involved. And a special thank you to Andrea Knick, who, although she does this at Adams, the reason we're starting at Adams tomorrow is she was over at McKinley giving us some assistance in that area. And then lastly, I'll just mention real quick, in our district, we have what's called a Continuing Ed Committee. There are seven people on that committee. I am one of them. I chair that committee. We met today. We meet five times a year, and what we do is we, we process continuing ed clock hours that are turned into the committee from our licensed staff in the district. All of our licensed staff have to produce one hundred twenty-five continuing ed clock hours over a five-year period. Within those clock hours, they need to meet seven mandatory requirements. Now, last Monday, Monday of last week and Friday of last week, we had two excellent days in our district where we had some staff development going on. Our staff development committee did a great job lining up, Superintendent Drake did a great job as well, bringing in some speakers. So we just had a really good week last week, and those days are important to help our licensed staff meet these requirements of one hundred twenty-five continuing ed clock hours over a five-year period of time. So thank you to the committee members on the Continuing Ed Committee, who we just got done meeting today. We met today from about three-thirty to four-thirty to process the committee version. With that, that's my report for today, and I'll open it up to any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Principal Kolbeck?
Can I ask a question here?
Sure.
With the distance learners, map test, I'm thinking about maps testing and then also eventually hit it with MCAs, which they don't worry about. Maps testing-wise, do they get, are they able to get tested, or how does that work? Are you offer it and they can decline it or accept it, or how does that all work on that situation?
So what we did with our virtual learners is we, we chose not to have them take map testing. The only way that we think that we could have made that work is if they would have taken that at home. Probably not the main reason, but one concern that we had is, would we really be measuring their learning if they were taking this at home versus if they were sitting in a computer lab at school by themselves, being proctored by Maggie or Meg?
I have a question. Do all districts test three times a year, or is that just something we've chosen to do? I feel like, or do you feel like you just finish one and it's time to do the next one?
So what I can say is not all districts use map testing. Our district, we choose to do that. I think some districts who map test, maybe test in the fall and the spring. We used to test only in the fall and the spring. And then we, for a while, we were putting it out to our teachers, would you like your students to test in the winter as well? And the vast majority of them did, and then we just kind of fell into this cycle where we do do it three times a year. It's not a lot of time. Just one class will go into the lab two times during this week. Forty-five minutes for a reading block, forty-five minutes for a math block. So the map testing measures literacy or reading and math. The other piece that I talked about, the DIBELS screening, the universal screening that we do fall, winter, spring, that's something that just takes a student out of the classroom for five minutes, working just with an adult to do that. It's all really good data that's very helpful for many people to have and to use.
Scott, on the, on the parents who put their kids back in school, there's quite a few of them, are you hearing anything consistent from them as far as reasons why they've chosen to push, put their kids back in school now? I can think, I mean, are they telling you that the kids need the structure? Are they telling you that they're afraid they're falling behind because of the distance learning? Are they, do they feel that the schools are safer? Is there anything over, any overarching reasons that you're seeing that you talk to the parents?
Right. So Kirby, I think the three explanations or reasons that you just gave, if we were to talk to, and I've visited with some of these families, not all of them, some of them have just simply called or emailed and said, hey, I'd like to get my child going again. But I think the answer would be all of the above. I do think that families are seeing that, you know what, this is maybe a little bit safer than I was initially thinking. Others, I think, are concerned that I think my child needs that structure. And maybe, quite honestly, some of them are maybe, it's, it's a commitment on the part of the parent to make sure that the child is doing what they need to be doing every single day. And there's benefits then of just kind of sending your child out the door into school and having them cared for that way.
I think a couple of the numbers, I'm a numbers guy, I mean, our numbers, our county of drop by eighty-five percent since November. That helps as far as the number of active cases. The other number, the other number that's interesting to me is that the Minnesota Department of Health said on Thursday that we're testing teachers now, of course, every two weeks. It's voluntary, but of the first seventeen thousand teachers, they tested the positivity rate was point three-six percent, which is actually less than what the false positive rate is usually around one percent. So you're looking at maybe sixty or sixty-one positives out of seventeen thousand. So I think our teachers are, it's a credit to our teachers that they're being safe, that they're, and I think that our, I have a firm belief that, I suppose, they're very safe. And I hope our parents recognize that as well.
Very good. Any other questions for Principal Kolbeck?
Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll welcome now Principal Lott, our elementary principal at Cleveland. Good evening.
All right, good evening, everyone. I too am just kind of amazed that we are truly at the halfway point of our school year. There's been a lot that's taken place this fall, and here we are at this point in time, and we too are just very grateful that we've been able to maintain the in-person instruction. Students are enjoying that contact and interaction instructor, and teachers are very grateful as well. That's how they know how to teach best, and so very, very appreciative of that. It has been quite some time since we needed to quarantine a classroom at Cleveland. However, this morning, we received notification of a positive case, and so we did need to quarantine one classroom this morning. And in delivering that message to the class and sharing that with students, immediately you can see their, their emotion shift, and there were some teary eyes and concern. So we talked through that this is, we're doing this to, as a, as a positive intervention to reduce the spread of germs and to keep us healthy and safe. And so once they're a little bit further reassured that this is the right thing to do and this is a temporary situation and not for the rest of the school year, they kind of gain a little better perspective of this is just for the next few days, and then we'll be back in-person as well. So we shifted gears very quickly this morning, but very, very, we are all very appreciative of each other doing our parts to keep each other health and healthy and safe and uphold those mitigating strategies so that we can move forward and continue our in-person instruction. We too have continued to have adjustments with student enrollment. Today, we had eleven students start back from distance learning or another mode of instruction, and so we had a busy morning with backpacks and Chromebooks and things walking through the door and shuffling students to their respective classrooms. Their classmates were excited to see them again and make those connections, so lots of happy, happy reunions here this morning at school. Currently, our second grade, two second grade classrooms at Cleveland are at twenty-four and twenty-five students. And as Mr. Kolbeck mentioned, the second grade distance learning section has seventeen students in it. Our third grade classrooms at Cleveland are between twenty-one and twenty-three students, and our current distance learning classroom has eighteen students. And the max of that distance learning classroom was twenty-four, so they've gone from twenty-four to eighteen currently. And our fourth grade classrooms, in-person classrooms, are between twenty and twenty-two students, and our distance learning section currently has twenty-one students in it. The high cap, or the, the high enrollment number for fourth grade was twenty-eight students, and we had, we've seen quite a shift of our fourth grade students shift from distance learning to in-person instruction recently. And then again, as Mr. Kolbeck mentioned, the universal screening is conducted in January, and so we too at Cleveland have been conducting that second round of the DIBELS universal screenings to get a, a measure of students' progress with their reading fluency, math fact fluency. And then in addition to that, at the third and fourth grade level, students take the STAR math and reading assessments. And we often, we do the STAR math and reading assessments more periodically over the course of the year, but we, we carefully look at those data points to determine students' progress or lack thereof, and it's really helpful in identifying students who really are in need of intervention with their math and reading skills to give them that boost. And at Cleveland, we have Title, as Title Reading and Math is one of the interventions, and then RTI, the Access Reading and Math Intervention, is the other component that we're using. And looking closely at those student data points and tracking them over the course of the year and having them to know them very well, we use all of that information in determining which intervention would be most appropriate for each child. And so there's a lot of work that goes into that, and I'd like to just express my appreciation to Pam Anderson and Kim Kamrowski, who are our interventionists at Cleveland. They coordinate and communicate and plan the efforts behind this, and along with them, our title paras step up to the plate, and they are very efficient in going into a classroom at a time, and there's minimal disruption, and they're very efficient in this process. So job well done on everyone's part. On the next two days, our second grade classrooms will take the math reading and math tests, and that's the measure that Mr. Kolbeck also mentioned with the, the map testing three times a year. Another intervention program that our district has in place is Otter Adventures. And Otter Adventures needed to be paused at the end of November, given the case rates at that time, and so we have reevaluated the current circumstances and determined that it is the right time for us to resume providing Otter Adventures after-school programming for the students that qualify for that. So next week on Tuesday, Tuesday and Thursdays is when they meet, but next week, Tuesday, Otter Adventures will resume after school, and that is, that takes place at the Roosevelt Education Center. So we're, we're pleased about that. And then lastly, I just wanted to conclude. On Thursday, January fourteenth, at the fourth grade morning orchestra rehearsal, they recorded their first concert. And so with the help of Mr. Thorsted, he was the videographer for the event, the students tuned up and got all situated, and then recorded a formal, their first-ever formal concert. And that was their way of being able to share their, their progress and how much their practice has proven itself. And the link to that concert was then thereafter shared with their family, so it was a great way for the parents to hear what they sound like all together as a group, because I think we've all learned that they sound much better together as a big group than they do practicing individually with all the squeaks that kind of come off. But their hard work has paid off. They were very proud of, of themselves and this opportunity, and kind of a big treat for them to be able to hear themselves as well. So great, great work by Mr. Peterson, Mr. Snordalen, our new music teacher, is there with those Thursday morning rehearsals and also small group lessons, and then again to Mr. Thorsted. And then in addition to that, I think just a big shout-out to the students and also their parents, because it really takes a commitment on the family's part to plan ahead and get their students to school early every Thursday morning. They're, they're getting set up and tuned up each Thursday morning at seven-thirty and make use of every, every minute of that early morning rehearsal before their school day begins. So they have lots of fun while they're doing this, but again, a great big thank you to those parents for their commitment. Any, any questions?
No questions for Principal.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And now we'll hopefully record from our secondary school principal, Mr. Dean Martin.
Hey, good evening, everybody. As our elementary principals talked about, the start of a new quarter here at the secondary school, we're delaying that for one week, especially in relationship to our high school and also through our seventh and eighth grade. We just felt it'd be very beneficial for our students to have one more week, especially as we made the decision to bring our high school students back in as of January twentieth to some more face-to-face days. So we're going to go one more week here. We'll end the quarter here this Friday on the twenty-ninth and get grades out the following week then. And I should make mention that we too have seen a lot of switching going on back and forth as we near the end of the first semester and the start of the second. Our high school is probably seeing more of an even switch back and forth. I've probably done about sixty over the course of the last two and a half weeks, and probably the majority is. the majority is still coming back in face-to-face, but it's not as much as we see as we move down the grade levels. I know I have at least eleven eighth graders sitting on my desk to be put in for the third quarter to start back face-to-face. And that was the group that we really had that was the highest number which was out on distance learning. So when we peaked with that grade level at about thirty-seven, thirty-eight students being out, now we're going to be back down to about twenty-six, twenty-seven students that will be out on distance learning in eighth grade, just as an example. And the trend in five, six, seven is the same, more students coming back to face-to-face. I believe I heard today numbers like our sixth grade will be down to sixteen and we have a number of our seventh graders that are coming back as well. So that's really exciting for us. And we're looking forward to that new schedule here, which we have with our high school students of them being face-to-face in here three days a week and dedicating two days a week to our distance learners as well. And then on February first, starting a week from today, we'll be inviting our middle school seventh and eighth graders in four days a week and having Wednesday off as a distance day for those students there. So that's going really well. We're keeping our fingers crossed that we can maintain and keep doing that. But as Kirby mentioned, the numbers just are really positive across the county and we've seen those within the school as well. Some other things that we're looking to delay slightly here is things like our registration process. Usually about the first week in February, we'd be gearing that up and asking our high school returning students to register for the following year. We're going to move that to about the first week in March. That will still give us enough time to work on that schedule, get them all done by May so those students can continue to take a look at that down to the last detail, get that all figured out before they leave. So we're going to condense that process, give ourselves a little bit more time for those students to be back in the building, ask some more questions of their counselors, study up that registration guide and we're going to take that information from them about the first week in March. And with that, as far as some of our other social activities going on around here, I know that the Student Council and Mr. Toki have decided to move Snowball back. It was scheduled for the first week in February, we're going to move that to the last week in February. Once again, just giving us a little bit more opportunity for those high school students to be back in the building. Hopefully, the conditions will just continue to improve so we can do more and more activities as it relates to that week. We may not be looking at dances, but we could be looking at doing a whole lot of the other activities that occur over that week connected with Snowball. A few other things going on here, our Saturday school program continues, both for our middle school and our high school. Our high school attendance, we have to admit, has been pretty bleak. We would sure like to invite a lot more of our high school students in for that additional help on Saturday mornings from eight-thirty to eleven. We have plenty of staff members here ready to help them. But our middle school has been taking advantage of that, anywhere from about fifteen to eighteen students coming on a Saturday morning for a little extra help there. So that's great. Couple other things to report on, some special programs we have around here. Our CMA program, Certified Nursing Assistance, they had ten students that successfully completed that program at the end of the first semester. We have fifteen students that are signed up for next semester. Our work-based learning program had twelve students involved in it this last first semester. They're looking to place eighteen for the second semester. And that again goes to a credit to some of our business partners that are out there and probably a little bit more willing now to host some of these students as we're getting closer to spring here and a little bit better conditions out there. I should make mention and offer a congratulations, our one-act play finished first in the subsections this last week. You know, if you would have told me at the beginning of the year that we were even going to have a one-act play, I probably would have looked at you cross-eyed on that. But I watched that, the play the other day, it was absolutely fabulous. The kids have done a great job. Ellie Nicholson is our director for that, again, doing a great job. They'll move off to sections here and see what they can do. It was a recorded version this year, which they weren't complaining about when you don't have to move a set. So they thought that that was just fine and they were sure having a blast just putting that production together. What else did I have here?
Dean, what grades is that, is one-act play for?
It's open to all of high school and that, that is our drama experience that is connected with Minnesota State High School League. So, yeah, they register like they'd register for an activity.
That goes all year long or is it just in the fall or is it?
That's usually our winter theater arts experience. And so they find about five or six weeks and they put that whole thing together from beginning to end. Yeah, and we probably had a dozen students involved, probably about eight or nine of them that were actually on the stage and a few more working in the background. So great experience. Yeah, so I think that's all I had for you here tonight. Any questions I can answer for you?
Dean, can I ask you just one question, just on substitute teachers in general?
Yeah.
Now that it's in the fall and some students, some people graduated from student teaching in the fall and now, you know, are probably in between about applying for positions if I haven't had one.
Sure.
Do the colleges reach out and say that they have available teachers now that have fulfilled their requirements and are available to be able to teach substitute teachers?
I've had a couple inquiries myself.
Okay.
But I don't know if, I don't know if we see anything forward from the colleges or the universities, it's usually by individual, you know, that have some kind of connection to the community and they might want to live here for the next six months or whatnot. But I don't know, Elaine, if we've seen any come directly our way.
I have not at all.
I've just had a couple.
Anything from either colleges.
I've had two inquiries of, you know, hey, if I did this, this, and this, could I sub for you guys for the rest of this year? You know, and we just kind of direct them to Elaine's office and whatever they need from there.
Okay.
But we'll take all the help we can get, that's for sure.
All right.
All right, thank you.
And then to report from our superintendent, Mr. Dick.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First, another shout out to our paraprofessionals with National Paraprofessional Recognition Week. Certainly, they serve a very important purpose in the support of our students educationally, the outreach to our families and the support that they provide to their fellow colleagues as well. So appreciate all they do to make a difference in our buildings on a daily basis. We also had quite an undertaking in our community on Friday and Saturday with the COVID vaccination clinic that was held in the Roosevelt Gym. And I just want to say my appreciation for the many people that worked together to put that together. The Minnesota Department of Health, Minnesota Department of Education, we had state contracted employees, the state actually contracted out the administration of the vaccine itself. We were working with Otter Tail County Public Health, Otter Tail County in general with their safety coordinator, the city of Fergus Falls with the police department and the fire department and then our own staff as well. It was a pilot program, so a lot has been learned over the experience from the nine sites statewide. But I would estimate, and I think this will be pretty accurate, that in the Fergus Falls site, about a thousand people roughly receive vaccinations over Friday and Saturday. So to all the folks for the district, from the district that helped make that happen and the rest of our partners, my sincere appreciation. I want to thank the Professional Development Committee for all their work in scheduling and designing Friday's staff development sessions. There was a lot of variety for staff to choose from. And then the keynote presentation was on the Ripple Program, which is designed as kind of an intervention school climate-type program to prevent school violence. I also want to say thanks to all of our staff for the work that they put in over the first semester. It has certainly not been without its challenges, but I'm very proud of the work that the district has done under the circumstances and very proud that we were able to maintain a relatively stable instructional model from September eighth through the end of first semester. With the exception of the period of time from November thirtieth through last week with our ninth through twelfth grade students, we basically maintained the instructional model for all of the grade levels that we started the school year out in. And as a district, we had committed to that decision way back in early August, which seems eons ago at this point. So a lot has certainly happened over that time. It's really nice to have the ninth through twelfth graders back in the building and we're certainly very excited to have our seventh and eighth grade students return four days a week, so we're looking forward to that. We've started to see athletic contests, seeing students in activities like the one-act play, just feeling like we're a little bit closer to normal than we have been in a very long time. And hopefully with the vaccinations taking place and the continued diligence that we have in following the safety protocols, these numbers will stay subdued and we're on the path towards normalcy here in the not-too-distant future. On Lincoln School, we do have a little hiccup out there, but I don't think it's expected to impact our completion date. We have a number of tiles, I want to say marmalite, excuse me, marmoleum, marmoleum, tiles. And the manufacturer specs give a fairly wide range in the thickness of each of those tiles. So when, when the contractor went to install those, edges were peeling up, we weren't getting a good, you know, a good transition from tile to tile. And so they ended up going back to the manufacturer, essentially saying this is unacceptable, this isn't going to work. So it was working with the manufacturer again to have a new shipment of tiles sent to the site and installed, which also involved taking out some of the work that already had been done that wasn't up to our expectations. So I think that everything's going to turn out fine. They still have enough time between now and February twenty-sixth, they think, to make the adjustments and put the better product down. But it was another little kind of fork in the road here on the project, which again, we're, throughout the whole thing, we are very close, we're on the cusp now of finally moving in, so that part is exciting. The other piece that I wanted to share with you tonight is hot off the presses. We received a kind of a preemptive call last night saying that superintendents were invited to a call statewide with Heather Mueller from the Minnesota Department of Education. They wanted to give us a quick snapshot of a program, Minnesota's educational plan called Due North. And so this is coming out of the governor's office and the Minnesota Department of Education. Essentially, it is a vision or strategic plan for education in Minnesota. I did give you a copy of it, it's in this handout on your tables. And just touching base on a few things, there are seven priority items. The first one says meet the needs of students during and after the COVID-19 pandemic. So that extends towards providing mental health support into the summer, looking at any kind of academic support that students need on the heels of this pandemic. Priority two is every student receives a world-class education. And this is basically tied directly to the 21st century of work skills that we've talked about as part of our strategic planning. You'll also see several references in here to social-emotional learning. Priority number three, every student learns in a safe and nurturing environment. Again, talking about relationships, social-emotional learning and making sure that we're building those connections with our students. Priority number four is every student learns in a classroom of caring and qualified teachers. So we are, we've been aware of this, there is a teacher shortage nationally, we feel the impact of that as well in Minnesota. They want to expand avenues to encourage people to join the profession in creating pathways. They want to make sure that when teachers begin the profession, they receive adequate mentoring and support. The data would show that we lose a lot of people new to the profession in the first year or two. If they're still teaching four to five years into it, then they tend to stay in teaching. So it's how do we provide that support and encouragement to scaffold them through those early years, which can be kind of challenging. Number five priority, expand access to opportunities for students of color and indigenous students. And so again, looking at the equity, inclusion and diversity work that the district is doing, the state is going to establish an equity, diversity and inclusion center to address systemic racism and develop and provide training for all school staff on anti-bias practices. Priority number six, expand access to opportunities for students in greater Minnesota. This is basically targeting, making sure that a rigorous course of study and course options are available to students, whether that's concurrent enrollment or AP classes or international baccalaureate classes, but making sure that those high rigorous, challenging courses are available to any student regardless of location. And then the final one, number seven, is Fund a 21st Century Education. And we are supposed to get more information about this component tomorrow, but there was a finance committee work group that was established, they made a number of recommendations to the governor's office. And this will be directly tied into a lot of that work. Also, back early on when it talked about supporting schools through the pandemic, there was a commitment there in this plan that would hold schools harmless for this fiscal year if it experienced a drop in enrollment due to the pandemic, which certainly most schools that I'm aware of in this region, ourselves included, did see that happen. There aren't many details yet, so you're seeing bullet points and we just received that this morning, it was embargoed until 2:00 PM when the governor spoke. But what I do feel really comfortable with right now is that many of the concepts that are on this document, to me, really align very well with the work we had already been doing as a district with our strategic planning. So I think for us in particular, as the details of the state Due North plan become more realized, we will be in really, really good shape transitioning into that expectation as well. So with that, I will turn it over to any questions that you might have.
I think one of the things that I saw was on the enrollment numbers because of declining enrollment of the code was that they would give us the option of using our numbers from last year. I think that was one of the key things.
Yeah.
I watched the governor today and a couple other key things that weren't in here, again, being a numbers guy, they talked, the governor talked about providing education where you don't have to rely on bond requirements and on tax increases to provide the best education that we can. And I thought that was interesting. And then point number six, where they talked about expand access to opportunities for students of great Minnesota, I heard the term geographic equity and that was interesting.
Yeah.
So two points there that were in the, in the video there online today that wasn't, that didn't make here.
Yeah, the, you know, the piece. Yeah, the, you know, the piece on the financial equity would be huge for us as we all know that statewide, we're near the bottom in terms of funding per student. So that would certainly be welcomed and have a tremendous impact on us financially.
Well, greater Minnesota in general, the bond referendums going away would not be a bad thing since we don't, in rural Minnesota, the bond referendums don't pass nearly as well as they do in metro areas. I remember writing somewhere around like 25% of them or something pass. And yeah, I mean, it would just be great to not have to revolve that if they could figure something out.
I thought it was also interesting, the speakers that he chose. I mean, he opened it, but then he kind of turned it over to the person from the Department of Minnesota DE, you know, education. And then also they had the president of Education Minnesota was there as well. And they had two students that talked, and Alan Page talked too. So it was an interesting mix of speakers.
We'll see when the details emerge, I guess. All right, any other questions or comments for the superintendent on his report?
I just got a question back to the COVID vaccines. In this first round that the county got, or 65-plus and teachers and staff were included in that, do you know offhand how many got allocated to the district this first round?
So by district, you mean just the school personnel?
Yeah.
Yes, so we had eight slots. That was our official allocation. The special ed co-op had two, I believe. And then the Lakes Country Service Co-op had three, I want to say, three slots. So immediately, that's what happened there. They estimated, and this gets into the weeds just a little bit, but when they calculated their initial capacity, it's based on five doses per vial. But if you're using the right syringe, you can get six out of them. And so there was some excess capacity. And when they gave us the number of 1,040 vaccines, that was figuring every other vial would hit six and then alternate vial would hit five. So they basically built in half of the excess as potential. So our eight slots were prioritized, given the directives of the state. And then we were encouraged to produce a standby list. And our district's initial standby list was 115 people. And then Saturday morning, I received a call from Heather Mueller from MDE that said it looked like additional doses might be available. And so we solicited district staff to sign up for a second standby list. There were some challenges that people encountered registering electronically for the site. I would say, frankly, I would say that the people that were managing the site locally did a really, really nice job under some challenging circumstances. There were some folks that showed up without appointments that needed to be addressed. Of course, we had the weather incident Saturday afternoon, which added some complications. But all told, when you look at the impact that it had on our school staff locally, when you count in the standbys, pretty significant. If we have, if we're able to do some standbys with round number two, which will be Friday and Saturday, if that goes well for us, I would say that many of the people that had hoped to be vaccinated within the district will have had that opportunity, which is extremely fortunate for us and certainly not the norm. But it was directly the result of needing people in close proximity to the site when they discovered that they were going to have greater capacity than initially estimated.
I have a couple more things on that. I know on Saturday afternoon, there was a deal that went out on Facebook. They said that there was more vaccine available, but they had exhausted the signup list. So they were encouraging people to go online at that moment and then could almost come in and almost notice. So and that's the kind of thing that happens. We get that, just want to make a note that there are, because they're encouraging people over 65 to come in as well, not just staff.
Right, right.
And so, you know, there's a lot of people that are over 65 that aren't real handy at getting online. So they do have a toll-free number. They have a local number that people can call to find out what's going on with the vaccine that's on that or some county website. They can also sign up for email notifications as far as when the next vaccination times and dates are going to be. So encourage people to utilize those resources as best they can. And if they're having trouble getting in and registering, have somebody else. Find a young person to help them.
And in this case too, those are really important points. The state's moved to a, first of all, because everything was condensed into such a tight window of time, the state system basically crashed and you couldn't get through to register. So that was an issue. In partial response to that, people are being given a wider window of time to go in and fill out their request to get a slot. And then it's going to be like a lottery system. And so that will hopefully take some of the pressure of everyone trying to jump on at once and overwhelming the system that's in place.
The other thing to keep in mind is that if you sign up, you need to kind of be by your phone because they'll call you and say, "Okay, you're coming in at such and such time." Because they have to spread people out. So there are people that have to kind of set aside their plans for Friday and Saturday because they were going to be on that, expecting a call at some point in time.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll continue with the agenda and consider for approval the general consent items. Things in this category to be considered for approval are the minutes of our reorganizational school board meeting and regular school board meeting, which we held on January 11th, 2021. And then we have a few personnel maneuvers. And so I will turn it over to you, Elaine.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Just a couple items here, support staff contract change, Krista Hagan. She's an ECEF childcare aide over at our Heritage Building. And she's been working approximately 29 hours. She's asked to reduce her work schedule to three to four hours a week, which is literally one night a week, depending on the need that night. And she would like that kept up, kept worry first. And then we have two certified staff retirements. And during the new business, you'll see resolutions on both of these. Joellen Johnson and John Damon. Joellen has been a teacher here at the Ferguson Public Schools for 43 years. And John Damon has served 27 years as both an elementary teacher and a curriculum integration specialist. And so I would recommend those for our approval.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the general consent items? And a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on these items? Hearing none, all in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, the general consent is approved. We'll move on to old business, whereupon we have our 2021 seniority list for the staff at Independent School District number 544, been reviewed by the staff with no changes. And I would look for a motion to approve that seniority list. Could someone offer that motion?
So moved.
All right, and a second? Okay, any discussion on that?
Why do we have to approve this? I mean, is it, isn't it just, why do we, I never understood why we have to approve this. Isn't it just looking at a date and seeing who's here longest?
There's various, there's education components, there's file holder components. And then there's also that start date. So we look at all of that. I work with the union and then show them my placement on the seniority list itself. And then this comes into huge play when we are doing our ULAs in the spring and things like that. So it's very important that they're placed on correctly.
Okay, so it's not just saying, oh, this person's worked for this many years, they should be at the top of the list.
No, there's education level that comes in. And then also there's a file holder tiebreaker that works in the whole mix of things.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any comments or questions? Hearing nothing further, all in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, that's approved. And we have a resolution. I will read this for consideration of approval. This is a resolution directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions and reasons therefore. Whereas the financial condition of the school district dictates that the school board must reduce expenditures, and whereas this reduction in expenditure may include discontinuance of positions and discontinuance or curtailment of programs, and whereas a determination must be made as to which teachers' contracts must be terminated and not renewed, and which teachers may be placed on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits in affecting the discontinuance of positions, be it resolved by the school board of Independent School District number 544 as follows. That the school board hereby directs the superintendent of schools and administration to consider the discontinuance of programs or positions to effectuate economies in the school district to reduce expenditures and to make recommendations to the school board for the discontinuance of programs or curtailments of programs. Will someone offer that resolution and move for its adoption?
I would offer that resolution as you have.
Thank you, and is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. And in terms of discussion, does anyone have any questions or comments regarding this resolution? It reads rather strictly that this is what we will do. It's simply an annual resolution that directs that we take a good look at the budget, which is this time of year. And so if it's necessary, then we'll discontinue or curtail. But that's not necessarily where we're at just yet. So just kind of a little bit of an explanation to go with the starchy language in the resolution. Any further comments or questions on this? All right. Then if you, acting clerk Matt Lemke could take your call, I appreciate it.
Natalie Knudson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lemke.
Yes.
Missy Hermes. Steve Vigasa.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
All right, thank you. So go on on that, there are business manager. Okay, and our next new business item is the fundraiser request for the second half of the school year, between February 1st and September 30th of 2021. We got a list in our packet. I wondered if I could have a motion to approve the proposed fundraisers. All right, is there a second? Okay. Did anyone have any concerns, questions, comments, or anything regarding the proposed fundraisers?
It seemed like the list is shorter this year.
Yes, Elaine Jenkey said that, you know, mid-year, there's a second call for fundraisers. And a lot of the groups or teachers have put in at the beginning of the year to cover for the whole year. So this is kind of a slighter submission list. All right. So we have a motion and a second, and any other discussion? Seeing and hearing nothing, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, that's approved. And we have a resolution, which I will read, and then we can take some further steps. The resolution of school board or the governing board supporting Form B application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation. Whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation was formed to provide support for Minnesota's high school youth to participate in athletics and fine arts. And whereas Ferguson Falls Public Schools Governing Board recognizes the value of student participation in extracurricular activities. And whereas Minnesota State High School League Foundation is offering grants and funding to assist school districts to provide seminars and training opportunities or support for specific school functions for students and faculty members and officials and others who are involved in athletic and fine arts programs. Therefore, be it resolved that the Ferguson Falls Public Schools Governing Board supports the school's application to Minnesota State High School League Foundation for a Form B grant. Would someone offer that resolution and move for its adoption?
I'll offer that resolution and move for its adoption.
Thank you, Matt. Is there a second? All right, thank you, Natalie. And so lots of words to say that we'll put in a request for the State High School League who provides some additional funding for students in need, basically. Is that an accurate summary, Matt? All right, any other discussion?
In this, how much do we normally ask for at a time? Is it just the maximum, or do we put a figure on it, you know?
It's just an annual, so they give, they did, they see you ask for it. And I think it just all depends on the funds and stuff like that. I don't exactly know how much we're going to receive this year just because of their financial picture themselves. So in some ways, it looks like me, like a wraparound. Because we're giving more this year, so it's kind of like, well, if we give more, they will wrap that around and give it back to us. I don't know.
Let's hope these guys aren't managed by the government.
All right. And Matt, would you take roll call vote, please?
Steve Vigasa.
Give me a first this time.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knudson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matt Lemke.
Yes.
And Missy Hermes. Resolution passes.
All right. We had a few more of these resolutions, I'll keep going. Whereas Joellen Johnson began her employment with Ferguson Falls Public Schools in August 1978. And whereas Joellen has been a valued employee with Ferguson Falls Public Schools for the past 43 years. And whereas Joellen has done an excellent job as an elementary teacher for the district. And now therefore be it resolved by the Ferguson Falls School Board to thank Joellen Johnson for her 43 years of dedicated service to Ferguson Falls Public Schools. Will someone offer that resolution and move for its adoption?
So moved.
All right, and a second?
I'll second then.
All right, and any discussion on the resolution?
I think she's number one in the seniority list as well.
She'll maintain that position till last day of school this year.
Yep.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions?
Well deserved.
And back to you again, Matt, for a vote.
Yep, Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matt Lemke, yes. Missy Hermes. Steve Vigasa.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knudson.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Very well. Thank you, Joellen Johnson. This is a governor's proclamation for Paraprofessionals Recognition Week. And of course, we heard that a bit in our administrative reports. And so to formalize it, here we go. Whereas Minnesota is home to more than 20,000 paraprofessionals who provide services in multiple settings within the schools, including support for instruction, student activities, and individual students, as well as numerous other tasks that contribute to the educational success. And whereas the support and services provided by the paraprofessionals are integral to student achievement, resulting in more effective Minnesota schools. And whereas the state of Minnesota and the Minnesota Department of Education are committed to excellence in education and recognize the important role that paraprofessionals play ensuring educational success. And whereas the Minnesota Department of Education will celebrate the contributions of paraprofessionals during Paraprofessional Recognition Week, which runs from January 25th through January 29th, 2021. Now therefore, the governor of Minnesota, Tim Walz, hereby proclaims the week of January 25th through January 29th, 2021 as, and this is in capital letters, Paraprofessional Recognition Week in the state of Minnesota. So will someone offer this resolution and move for its adoption?
I'll offer the resolution as you ready.
All right, thank you, and a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Natalie. And any discussion? Hearing none, I'll move to you, Matt, then, for a vote.
All right, Steve Vigasa.
Yes.
Missy Hermes. Matthew Lemke, yes. Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Natalie Knudson.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution passes.
Very well, thank you, everybody for that. Item number six on the agenda, looking for a motion to approve a master agreement between the Cooperative Purchasing Connection, which is an entity, and the school district to participate in the Bread and Bread Products Program, starting on July first of this year and going through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-three. So I'll take, entertain the motion and then we'll learn a little bit more from the business manager. Will someone offer that motion?
Some.
And a second?
A second.
All right. And Blake, can you just give us the download on what the, the Bread Products Program is?
It's the best way we can get the best pricing for all of our bread products. It's a, they work with a group of about ninety-nine school districts that puts our bid and an RFP across the state to get the best whole grain pricing to offer, to get the best discounts for the school district. And they've been doing it free of charge and they've been doing a good job over the past few years after talking to Lance and with bread pricing, so.
All right. And by committing to this Cooperative Purchasing Connection, what are we committing to then?
We're committing to them doing all of the formal bidding processes to figure out the best pricing for our schools. So essentially, they will take care of all of the nuances that happen within a bid process.
Does this cost us anything?
No.
Okay.
The advantage, advantage for the connection group is that they, they get, now meaning Matt, maybe going to lead it more on from a Lakes Country Service Cooperative perspective, is that they get access to the vendors that they get to work with, which there's just, you know, just how business works.
Yes.
I think on a cooperative basis is because it's, because it's a larger quantity, more people, yeah, more people are interested, of course, because it's, you know, it's a larger pool of schools and products. So you should, in theory, which I think usually yes, look at a better price than if you just go individually.
Great, and this has the test practice. Yeah. All right, very good.
So you're recommending we approve it?
Yes.
Our decision should be easy as pie, like a piece of cake.
They're basically a bread, a bread broker.
Yes.
We'll have a toast after.
Welcome, Mo.
Yeah, I want to think of a, yeah, a snappy little, little motion there.
Have we concluded our discussion on this topic?
Do you approve and then some?
All right, all in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, that one passed. And so next, next item on business is I'm looking for a motion to approve the revision to policy number eight oh eight, COVID-19 face covering policy. Would someone offer that motion?
Some.
And a second?
Second.
All right. And the discussion on this?
I, I have just one question. On the M S B A policy, they are recommending a face mask and a face shield. So we're choosing to give the staff the option of wearing a face shield if they so choose.
Yes.
That's the leeway that we think we're going to have.
Okay.
Yeah, and for the newspaper, Heather, that they don't have to wear them during F I A I anymore, so you might have a headline for tomorrow morning.
Very good.
All righty.
We formally, they don't have to wear them during choir.
They do have during F I A I. F I A I was not before, now it is.
Oh, really?
Yeah, that's the difference. That's the main difference.
F I A I is.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Exactly the opposite.
So choir, they do have to wear them, right?
But not bad.
Just want to make sure, all right.
Yeah. Oh, I see what, I see what we're doing. Helps when you read it, but that's too bad. Okay, so anyway, got a copy of the revision in our packet. And any other discussion on it? All in favor of approving that, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, that's approved. And look for a motion on number eight, call for bids for potential roof renovation project at Kennedy Secondary School and/or at the Roosevelt Education Center for this coming summer of two thousand and twenty-one. Would someone offer that motion?
Some.
All right, and is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. And we're just going to call for bids and see what it looks like?
Yeah, so we initially budgeted as a foreigner capital outlay at about four hundred thousand. And we have identified a few spots in Kennedy, specifically the roof above the wrestling room, the pool roof, and then the maroon gym roof. And then there's a small piece on, at Roosevelt on the northwest corner of the building, more on that corner up by Freiberg, I believe it's one of the well-known metal classes, is kind of in that area, that is in need of some roof renovation. And the goal, the goal is to stick between, for us is to be the two hundred and fifty to three hundred range. Now that, that can also increase or decrease depending on what we decide on, if we want to continue to, if we get it at the right price, to add to that list.
Oh, sorry.
But we do have a cap to it, or to our capital outlay budget, and our goal is to stay under that with, with us still continuing to finish the Lincoln Bridge. This is just to see where we, where we, what we can do. The goal is to do some work in the much-needed places at Kennedy and also possibly direct.
All right, thank you for that review. Any other discussion on this? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Very good. And next is a motion, I'm looking for a request for proposals to represent school district as a broker agent of record to solicit insurance products and bids. So would someone offer that or make that motion?
Some.
All right, and a second?
I'll second.
All right, and just basically looking for bids on insurance products as well?
So this, do you want me to explain this one?
Yeah, you can go ahead.
So this one, you're, is all about selecting the agent that's going to represent the district. So it's wide open and people can submit their proposals, what their commission might be, et cetera. And then the district, once it has selected that person, they will work with us to go up for quotes. And then they are able to sort through to make sure we're comparing apples to apples and that the policies are, you know, estimating the replacement of buildings and stuff to be comparable, those kinds of things. There's a tremendous amount of work in comparing the different quotes, and it's really helpful to the district to have that broker involved with it.
Very well. Additional comment?
No, pre, about a month ago, we, we, we withdrew from Mist, our previous technical broker, our insurance broker for us. And this is just a follow-up to proceed on, to continue the choosing of the person who is going to go in for us.
Very good.
And I, I need to recuse for a conflict of interest.
All right. So noted that, that Steve Vigasa will recuse on this. So is there any other discussion? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, that motion, it passes. And we are looking for a motion to call for bids for the printer scanner service and equipment contract. So would someone make that motion?
Some.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Take Steve.
I'll take, I'll take Steve then. And just time to see where we're at with that, too?
Yeah, we're previously coming off a five-year contract that hasn't been readjusted or looked at from a present standpoint. And the vendor group or the competitive group has actually grown over the last few years. So I think this is a good time to go back and see what we can get.
All right, that sounds good. Lot of work coming out of that business office, thank you. Any other discussion on that? Call for bids? All right, all in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, very good. And the final item on the agenda for action tonight is a resolution on the retirement of John Damuth. Whereas John Damuth began his employment with Fergus Falls Public Schools in August nineteen ninety-four, whereas John's been a valued employee with Fergus Falls Public Schools for the past twenty-seven years. And whereas John's done an excellent job as a curriculum integration specialist and elementary teacher for the district. And now therefore be it resolved by Fergus Falls School Board to thank John Damuth for his twenty-seven years of dedicated service to Fergus Falls Public Schools. Would someone offer that resolution and move for its adoption?
I'll offer that resolution. I'll second that.
All right, thank you. And any comments?
Yeah, my, I had the privilege of having John as my daughter's second grade teacher on this. And just, he's just, he was just an excellent, excellent teacher. He tried to pull the wool set up every kid. He differentiated well. He was an advocate for gifted and talented. The science projects he did with the chicks and the, I just, I, I also read in his class for a series, we read some chapter books with the kids and, yeah, I was shocked to actually see his retirement today. So it's definitely some, he'll be missed and there's definitely some big shoes to fill figuratively and literally for John. So we'll definitely be missing him as a teacher, so.
Nice tribute, yes, he's contributed much. Any, any other comments? And back to you, Matt, then, for?
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knudson?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Lemke, yes. Missy Hermes? Steve Vigasa?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
All right, thank you, John, for all your years of good service. And I will note that we'll have our regular school board meeting on February eighth here, maybe at the Otter Community Room. And at five fifteen, we will adjourn, but then the board will stay for several work session items, including strategic planning, facility fees, use of the district's facilities, instructional, and instructional practices. So we'll have a few things to talk through before we go home tonight. Would someone offer a motion to adjourn?
Some.
All right, and a second? Any discussion on that? All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.